All right, sorry folks, we had some technical difficulties there. The online participation, the audio is not operational right now, however, people are free to watch on the Auburn television station. So this is an open meeting of the Town of Auburn. Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, the number is 1-408-650-3123, with an access code of 235-235-861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow alongside, or to follow using the posted agenda. All the members of the board are here, so we can skip these parts. And please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. And with that, are there any members of the public recording this meeting today? No? Okay. And with that, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Are we jumping ahead with anything?
We can go right to the first presentation, please.
All right, so we're going to go right into the public hearing presentations. And the first one is presentation of the Fire and Rescue, Fire Rescue and Emergency Medical Services Study by Municipal Resources Incorporated. The podium is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Donald Bliss. I represent Municipal Resources Incorporated, and also my colleague, Chief Mark Cotro, is here tonight. What I'd like to do is just run through a brief PowerPoint and give you an overview of our study, which I believe you have, and hopefully I've had a chance to review, and leave enough time for questions that you might have. So, um, we were engaged by the town to do an analysis, yes, sir.
Sir, excuse me if the town administrator would like to.
Hi.
Sure.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for coming in.
Good evening.
I just wanted to just take the opportunity to really quickly explain, and I know you're going to go through it, but for the board's perspective, this study was funded with ARPA dollars. And we had done so because we had some increased, quite a bit of an increased call volume, and we wanted to see if it was due to the pandemic, and be if some of it, or a part of it, was due to the pandemic, what could we do in the future to try to alleviate that, whether it's pandemic-related or not. So that was the context of it. And then, as a result, we went with this firm, MRI, which is, I can't say enough about working with them. Just, you all did a tremendous job. And also want to just make a note, Deputy Chief Johnson was the lead person at the Fire Department. I know Chief Coleman was out on medical leave at the time. So I want to thank Deputy Chief Johnson, because he put a lot of time and effort into this, and also thank some of the department heads that were interviewed for part of this study. So I just wanted to tee that up a little bit, but sorry, Don, please continue. Thank you.
Glad you provided that background. Thank you, Julie. So, as Town Manager indicated, we were retained to take a look at the Fire Department operations with a primary focus on staffing levels, but anytime we go into community, we take a general overall view to see if there are any gaps and deficiencies in the operation, staffing, facilities, equipment, apparatus, and so forth. Looking at current and future demands for service, looking at demographics, looking at growth factors in the community, looking at risk factors in the community, and then also looking at where you may want to be in the future, where we think you should be in the future with regard to fire protection and emergency medical services. So our recommendations are really in two stages, both what we think are the current needs, and then future things the community should be looking at as you are able to afford them, and then also as the community grows and changes. So. So our goal is to really provide a report that's going to be useful for you today, and is a resource as you shape your long-term vision for the success of the Auburn Fire Rescue Department. And our guidance provides you with 35 recommendations. Now, I'm not going to go through every recommendation tonight, because we certainly don't have the time, but we will highlight some of what we think are the more important ones. And hopefully you'll use this report as a roadmap for the future, and of course modify it based on local needs and resources as time goes on. So our methodology, I think, is important to mention. We did do interviews with numerous stakeholders, both within the Fire Department, also amongst town department heads. We looked at a lot of data, both historical data about the responses that the Fire Department does, and a lot of documents, standard operating procedures, mutual aid procedures, and so forth. We also did a comparison study with five different Massachusetts communities to give an idea where does Auburn stand on the spectrum of staffing, funding, operations, procedures, and so forth. We evaluated the fire and EMS operations, your facilities and resources, took a look at mutual aid. We look at some of the future growth impacts that will affect fire protection and emergency medical services. And we did do a one-day site visit. We were initially hampered by, during the height of COVID, of being able to come to town, but fortunately we were able to do a site visit, and that gave us a great opportunity to look at actual conditions here. So our recommendations are based, one of the nice things about the fire service is there are a lot of national standards that you can base your operations on and use as benchmarks. So our recommendations are based on those national standards, such as the one shown here, which is NFPA 1500, the standard for Fire Department Occupational Safety, Health, and Wellness Programs. I will mention that these standards are not mandated by law, except where they might be in statute by the state or by federal requirements, such as OSHA requirements. But generally speaking, there are highly recommended practices, which are advisable to use for a variety of reasons. Our project team included myself. I'm not going to go into details in our background. You'll find that in the report. But I have, do have a 34-year fire service experience in New England, both as a municipal Fire Chief and at the state level, as State Farm Marshal in New Hampshire. My colleague, Chief Cotro, is a current chief, but also had been the Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director in Concord, Mass. Was involved with the Massachusetts Regional Hazmat Response Team for 19 years, is a certified Chief Fire Officer. So we both have considerable experience dealing with Massachusetts Fire Service. So some of the challenges that you have here in Auburn, specifically with regard to the fire and EMS services, you're all familiar with the growth and the development the community's experiencing. You have significant industrial hazards and a major transportation network, not just road transportation, but a rail transportation system, which has incredible impact on your fire and EMS delivery. Like most communities now, we have an aging population, myself included in that, where we're seeing increased services to the baby boomers that are now entering assisted living and nursing facilities. You're building, you're getting new buildings, but you have a lot of aging building stock, which certainly plays a role in fire protection. Auburn is uniquely challenged with far more simultaneous incidents than we're used to seeing, something like 37% of your incidents are happening at the same time, and so that's impacting delivery of services. You're well aware of your fire station deficiencies. We did not get into detail on that because you already have an initiative underway for the replacement and upgrading of your fire stations. We'll talk a little bit about mutual aid requests and ambulance turnaround time, and ultimately low staffing because of all of these factors. One of the very nice things, and you should be very proud of, is not only the professionalism of your town staff, department head staff that we encountered, but also the fact that there's incredibly good communications between the town leadership, the Fire Department leadership, and the union. We don't often see that, and they don't agree on everything, but everybody from our perspective is working in the same direction, working for the betterment of the community. And you should be very proud of that and continue to build on that success. So that's something we really wanted to highlight here. So in terms of response metrics, Auburn Fire Rescue Department averages just about 11 emergency responses per day, and this is over a three-year average. We see that increasing over time. 72% or so are EMS incidents, which is right around, consistent with the national average of Fire Department responses to EMS versus fire calls. In fact, in some communities, they're calling their fire departments EMS agencies that happen to have fire trucks, and that's pretty much a national trend. You're seeing around 11 structure fires per year, which is not unusual for a community the size, but that is a significant factor, the fact that these are major incidents. And as I said before, 37% are simultaneous, and you have a very good record with regard to average response time of getting to a scene from the time of dispatch to arrival of just over four minutes, which is really the target that you want to have. And I, it's difficult to see this slide, but it just shows the importance of that four-minute response time, not only for medical calls, but also for the growth of the fire. Fires are now building at a much faster rate due to the type of materials inside of buildings. Back when I was a firefighter, I rarely saw a flashover, because it would take 20 to 30 minutes to see a room erupt in a total fire situation. But nowadays, many times their flashover occurs even before the Fire Department arrives. And that bode, that doesn't bode well for the occupants of a building, because if you have flashover that quickly, typically you will have a fatality involved with that. So that's a critical factor with regard to response times. On our comparable cities analysis, it's helpful, but I would be very careful with how you use that data, because there is no community in Massachusetts or anywhere that's identical to Auburn in terms of its challenges, its demographics, its size, and so forth. And metrics that are used by communities for their fire departments vary from town to town, so it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison. So it's helpful to go through these benchmarks, these comparable benchmarks, and look at them to see where you stand. Look at the outliers, look where there could be improvement or changes, but it's not the only guidance that we would offer in terms of evaluating where you are with your Fire Department. But you see, we used Bellingham, East Longmeadow, North Borough, North Bridge, and South Bridge for comparability. I just happened to pick this particular slide that compares cost per call and cost per capita of providing these services. And of course, it varies, because you may have a different revenue stream for your EMS services than other communities and so forth. So there's a lot of things to take a look at with regard to comparable services. We hope that you look at the recommendations as being opportunities for change, for growth, for improvement, and for reaching a strong and vibrant future for your community. So with regard to organization, we certainly suggest that the current impact shift that was established to ensure that you have enough EMS units on the road be continued, using ARPA money for that. We think that is a good stopgap measure until you are able to round the clock, improve your staffing levels. You have applied for a Department of Homeland Security SAFER grant, which would provide additional staffing. You've asked the federal government to provide funding for 12 additional positions. We think that would be very important to implement. If you don't get that grant, we would suggest hiring eight firefighter paramedics as soon as possible. Now, you may wonder why we said eight, and you've applied for 12, where we're looking financially saying to be as fiscally responsible in that recommendation. Certainly 12 would be ideal, but for the immediate time, we think that eight would be a good start. We're also recommending reorganizing the shift staffing. Currently, the shift supervisor, a captain, rides on the engine, and so he or she really has two major responsibilities. One is being the immediate supervisor for that engine company, which means interior firefighting, but he or she is also the incident commander, which requires them to be outside the building, making all kinds of decisions that affect the operational tactics and the safety of the firefighters responding. It's impossible to do both jobs. So we're suggesting moving that captain to a command car, which gives them more supervisor responsibility even on day-to-day activities, and then having a lieutenant in that engine company, so you would have a lieutenant at each station in addition to the captain. We're also recommending, based on the workload, that you hire an additional fire inspector. This is based on the current workload and the projected future growth, and also to be able to accommodate ongoing inspections that are required of existing buildings. You also have only one administrative person in the Fire Department. If that person retires, or is on vacation, or disappears, there's nobody to do those critical functions like payroll, like permitting, other activities. So hiring a clerk for the Fire Prevention Bureau to help them with the backlog of work there, but also as a fill-in for that administrative assistant at headquarters would be critical. And we've identified some future things to be thinking about, additional eight firefighter EMTs to staff a basic life support ambulance, establishing a full-time training officer position, and considering the establishment of an assistant fire chief. So, moving on to stations, as I said, we didn't dwell on the fire station issues, other than we fully concur with your initiative underway to replace your existing fire stations. They are, really are, not meeting the needs of the community today. You do have a critical issue in that the current alerting system within the stations is, needs to be upgraded. It just is not audible, the firefighters can't hear it. They rely on their cell phones, their pager, their two-way radios to hear calls, and that's just not a good thing. There's some technology issues that we think would be actually relatively easy to accomplish. There are tablets in the apparatus for incident command and pre-planning that are not being used to their full capabilities, so there needs to be some training and some standard operating guidelines established for that. And then there should be an expectation that the Fire Department take advantage of the town's GIS system, which is critical to Fire Department operations. That's a data piece that's absolutely essential for pre-planning and for operations. We think that it would be helpful to have a IT needs assessment for the Fire Department. Fire Departments are sort of an anomaly when it comes to IT, because there are a lot of activities that the Fire Departments adopt, specialized programs, or kind of cobble together equipment, or apps and so forth, not really looked at from a systemic standpoint that may not tie in exactly with the town's IT system. So you're not unique in that respect, but there really needs to be somebody to come in with that expertise to look at your IT capabilities and build on that and enhance that, because it really is critical in this day and age. And then one other thing, although we did look at Fire Department Communications, it was not a primary focus of our study. We did see some security deficiencies in the town's emergency communication center. The good news is that the Department of Homeland Security Regional Protective Security Advisors will come in and do a free security assessment. We have a police chief to that. We strongly encourage you to do that, and that will help you in your decision-making on future communications and facility needs. Apparatus, again, you have a good capital replacement program in place. We did see some deficiencies in terms of prioritization of emergency vehicles for repair and maintenance, so we are encouraged that all emergency vehicles get that high priority. We also know that you're now without a reserve fire pumper, so I would suggest that you look at borrowing, leasing, or even buying a good used frontline, or a good pumper that could be put in service until the pumper that has been ordered is going to arrive, and that's going to be another year or so before that gets here. It's like two years out to get a new fire truck these days. Future, we suggest for your maintenance shop, hiring emergency vehicle technicians, or one or more that are certified in that respect, and even long-term, considering a regional initiative for municipal vehicle repair, because you're not the only community that's in this situation. A couple of issues with mutual aid. You have a very strong fire mutual aid district, a very strong EMS district, but as I think you're probably aware, there have been some issues with Worcester EMS. Now, I know the town manager and the fire chief have been aggressively working on this. This is not a problem unique to Auburn, so it suggests that the EMS district take the lead on that with some pushing from Auburn to address the overuse of EMS resources to go into the city of Worcester. They have challenges with staffing and hiring and number of calls, but the area communities should not be carrying that burden on a daily basis. And the same with Worcester Fire Department, for some reason, has a strange policy of not providing station coverage to mutual aid communities, and that should be reciprocal. So that needs to continue to be addressed, again, by the mutual aid district. Getting to closing now, we encourage you to continue with this type of strategic planning. You have a great command staff that understands strategic planning, understands the NFPA standards, and working in collaboration with their operational staff and the union, I think, and continue to work on master planning, using the recommendations in this report, using the NFPA standards, and they'll continue with that activity. There are lots of metrics that can be used in addition with your town planning department. You've got a great community risk reduction program in the Fire Department that looks at these issues, and continue to use the NFPA standards as benchmarks will serve the community very well into the future. So the challenge ahead is steadily increasing requests for service in a fast-growing community. We haven't even touched on the whole disaster environment, which, as you well know, with climate change and other reasons, disasters are increasing in severity and frequency. That's the life we live in today. Your fire and EMS services, along with your Emergency Management Director, are at the forefront of that, and they will continue to have to attend to that. And just to continue with the long-term development of your organization, its personnel, facilities, technology, equipment, you will be well-served in the future. We hope that you'll give careful thought to each of these recommendations, plug them into your budgeting, plug them into your master planning, your capital planning, and as you accomplish things, recognize, accomplish these things, recognize that accomplishment, because it's to the credit of the community and its citizens. And I can't emphasize enough, from our perspective, how well-served your community is by its public surveillance that we encountered, not just in the Fire Department, but in your town department heads, your leadership, and in the fire and EMS services. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Will there be any questions from the board members?
All recommendations for staffing, we took into account two separate facilities. Were there ever discussions about one central facility and what the staffing needs would look like there, or are they irrelevant?
Couldn't quite hear.
So your staffing recommendations, based on two locations, if there was one location, would that change your staffing?
Well, we certainly would not recommend, given the response times in the communities, we wouldn't recommend going down to one facility, at least from our limited work at looking at kind of the geography of the community. You would still have, I believe that you would still have that, those staffing needs, because the demands for service are such that you'd still need at least two engine companies, at least three ambulances, plus the ability to staff an aerial ladder or a heavy rescue. So I don't think your staffing levels would change. Chief, do you, you're, come over to the microphone first.
I don't think it's really going to serve any purpose to, if you were to merge the two stations together. A couple of things. What we're trying to do is address an activity issue where you have 37% of your runs are simultaneous. Depending on, you know, where they are, for that number really doesn't make a difference. You need a certain amount of resources to address those, and 37% is a staggering number. I mean, I looked at this for a long time, and it's really, that's a lot. Even when you take the Worcester EMS impact, we did a, we did a three-year average. So yes, there was a big increase in the, in the third year, in the most recent year, but it was also that, that three-year average takes that into account. So even if that 37% was 25%, I'd be telling you that that's a staggering number. It's a big, big number. So it's hard to address that any other way than with, than with, you know, resources, not so much geography. The other, the other thing is, is that 70-some-odd percent of your, of your runs are EMS, and by centralizing a station here, especially with the grid work of transportation you have out there, is going to slow up your, your responses significantly. Again, we haven't really looked at it, but safe to say it's going to slow it up significantly. And in those recommended timeframes to get to somebody's house who's having, who's having a heart attack, or some other serious medical emergency, they'll be sacrificed in many situations by doing that. It's good thought, but, but those of us in the business, you can look at it, and it just doesn't work.
I had another question regarding that 37% of the same time. Is that pretty consistent same time a day, or is that through the 24-hour period, it happens all over, or can we say like a big chunk of it is during like morning rush hour or evening rush hour?
I'd have to pull up the, we have that data, but as I recall, the, one of the reasons you put the impact shift on during the daytime, Monday through Saturday, is because that's the peak hours for you. So, yeah, it, it does vary. Obviously, the number, you know, nighttime is a very quiet time, but that's when you have your life-loss fires, so it's critical to keep that staffing going round the clock.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. That was very informative. Just one question from me. What would you say, or would it be safe, say that the eight firefighter EMS, or the 12, depending on that SAFER grant, would be the most urgent need, or?
Say that again?
What would you say the most urgent need, based on those recommendations, are?
We, we think it's a staffing issue, because you have so many times, because of these simultaneous calls, that the community is really vulnerable, because one or two ambulances is out on a call, or you're tied up with a, an accident out on the, or a crash out on the turnpike, or on the interstate. So you've got really, really low, low coverage in the community. So we think that the, and plus the impact on, just the wear and tear on the troops is, is pretty bad.
Thank you. Any questions from town administration?
No questions so far, just, I think there's a lot of information to absorb. I know we sent the study to you last week. Feel free to ask us any questions. We can always bring the chief or the deputy chief in at a future date if you have questions that we could share with the entire board. There was a lot of information there. I think just one comment I want to make is a follow-up to a statement that Don made about Worcester EMS. And yes, the chief and I have met with the city And yes, the chief and I have met with the city of Worcester officials, and we've met with UMS, and we've met with, forgive me, Steve, the. Thank you. I couldn't recall his title. So we did have a meeting at the Worcester Fire Department about this. This is an issue that's gone on for maybe up to a year. It just seemed to get heightened about two months ago. So we immediately had a meeting, and I think we've resolved some of the issues, if not most, but at least we know that there is a plan in place on the Worcester side to address some of those issues that they were having that was causing repercussions on us. That being said, I just also wanted to be clear that over the years, if you look at the long term, the city of Worcester has provided more mutual aid to Auburn than Auburn's probably provided to Worcester.
Mutual aid is still a good thing, absolutely.
Mutual aid is a good thing. You can't, it's against the law to not do it during mutual aid. But I think it's important to note that over the years, there's this healthy blend. There are going to be periods where Auburn needs it more, and there are going to be periods where Worcester needs it more. It just so happened that all came at once, and a lot of it is due to the labor issue, staffing shortages, as well as pandemic-related calls that have increased since the pandemic because where someone may have originally thought, I'm not going to call an ambulance, now with the pandemic, it might be their first call instead of their last call. So that is being addressed, but I just wanted to be clear, mutual aid is still a great thing for us. We just have to find a way, working with Worcester and UMS, to make sure that the burden doesn't always come on Auburn or any of the other communities. Because if it doesn't come on Auburn, it's going to go on another community. And again, that affects our mutual aid for station coverage. So it's a complicated issue, but it is being looked at. We just wanted to assure the board. Chief?
Through the chair. And to that point, the requests for mutual aid have gotten significantly better since we had that meeting, to a level that I'm comfortable with even moving forward. If we were to get the amount of requests that we're getting now, to me, that is a completely reasonable number based on a total percentage of call volume that we would, that's consistent with really all of that percentage from all of the other communities that we provide mutual aid to. So since that meeting, that situation has gotten considerably better.
One more question, chief, that I did want to ask you. The technology piece, is that a concern of yours? And do you have thoughts to, that maybe we could help out in terms of that technology part?
Excuse me. I think when it comes to the technology, if you look at the amount of apps and programs and things that we have for, you know, call notification for alerts to cell phones, to fire reporting, to ambulance reporting, which is in two separate systems, there's a lot there. I think the issues, and the deputy could probably speak to this better than I can because he oversees a lot of the IT piece. I think in some respects, where we're seeing issues on the IT side is with the cybersecurity issues and the way that the parameters on the system are getting locked down. I think everybody understands in scope the idea of cybersecurity prevention and locking a system down. But in some respects, we're locking the system down to a point where the programs that we're trying to run and utilize, we don't have the speed in order to do it. So it's limiting the functions of our programs operating every day because we just keep shrinking those parameters in order to keep our system safe. I don't know that that's something we're going to be able to solve today, you know, because I think the issue of cybersecurity is ever-changing. But I think especially on the EMS side with reporting, I think we are seeing some significant issues when it comes to how our systems are being utilized based on a lot of the practices that have been put in place to try to secure our system.
I just have one question, chief, or maybe the deputy. Steve, when do you expect to hear on the application for the SAFER grant? When is that?
So the SAFER grant usually starts getting awarded right about this time, end of July through August, maybe the early part of September. But the bulk of the awards typically come out around August. So we should start seeing really any time now FEMA start announcing some grant awards.
And did I hear correctly that if the town were to get awarded on this next round, that the three-year funding period is 100% for each year?
That is correct. FEMA did change their parameters. So if we were to receive the grant, there would be no match like the previous SAFER grant that we're wrapping up actually this year. So all three years for the grant would be funded 100% for the three years. Mr. Chairman, just one more point, just to the question about the fire stations. The fire station, the Public Safety Building Committee met last week and officially took a vote that will be coming to this board at some point. But they officially took a vote last week to maintain, to make a recommendation to maintain two fire station sites. As you know, we've gone out with an RFP for land on two separate occasions that yielded no response for land. So as I stated to the committee last week, I had always been in favor of looking at a joint facility, providing we could find the right location that would not impact response times. Where that does not appear to be the case, I cannot in good faith and conscious, consciousness recommend the closure of a fire station. If we don't know, and we, you know, we don't, here's what we know. We know that there is no central location to place a fire station at this point that will not affect response times. So with that said, my recommendation to the committee, as well as town administration in consultation with them, the committee voted to pursue the construction of a new police and fire headquarters on the current West Street location, and then maintain our current fire headquarters facility as a station two. So that was the recommendation of the committee that ultimately will come before this board for further discussion at some point.
That stands to, I mean, since the first day I was board selectman, I knew that it was, priority was call times, and that was backed up tonight in the presentation. So that certainly stands.
Yeah, we have extremely good response times, and, you know, we just can't do anything to jeopardize that.
And through the chair, we plan on bringing that recommendation to you in August. They met Monday night, but as a result of that, I reached out to town council with a couple of questions. So as soon as I get all the information from town council, it wasn't in time for this agenda, so I can bring it to the board on August 22nd.
Any further questions, comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Moving on to communications. And with that, we have the Mass State Lottery Commission regarding a Keno license application by Young Shing. So discussion on license and possible votes. Do we have anybody?
Through the chair, we do have a representative of Young Shing here, and you don't have to say anything unless the board calls on you. We did, as a courtesy, let him know. So I do want to just fill the order in on this particular license. This did go before the DCG last week, and the DCG had no concerns about this license. I know with the previous Keno license, there was a concern with the placement of the Keno within the property. It was a very small property. There was a concern by the building commissioner of traffic flow movement and access and egress with regard to emergency vehicles. There's no concerns with this. DCG has, is not recommending that the board take any action because they're comfortable with it. So under the Mass Lottery regulations, the board need, does not need to take any action. If the board opposed it, then the board would have to send a letter explaining their concerns. But if you do not have any concerns and do not oppose it, a vote is not required.
That's what I, okay, that's what I had thought, that we didn't necessarily take action.
So that's why I put it on the agenda as a possible vote. I didn't want to presume that the board would not want to take a vote, but, so should you want to take a vote to oppose it, you can under the agenda. But under the regulations from the state, it, my understanding was there was a Keno machine there previously, but now it's in new ownership, so it's a different license.
Absolutely. We don't vote for or oppose it, then how do we know that we have no issue?
No action taken would mean that it would be approved through?
Correct. The state will approve of the license unless they hear from the licensing authority that you do not approve. If there's no objection, then the state will approve if it meets all the state requirements.
I think it's procedural. I just don't get it, how you would know how the board perceives it without voting.
That's what I put on as a possible vote. You could vote to support it. It's just not required under the law. Under the law, it's required to vote, well, not under the law, under the regulations of the State Lottery Commission, it's required to let them know if you oppose it. And under our procedures, that would be by a vote of the board. So you could, you could take a vote to support it, and we don't have to respond at all to the License Commission. They will only respond if we tell them that there's a concern. Does that answer your question?
I think so. We probably look for a last question.
I'm a big supporter of Young Shings. If you want to vote to support it, then we can do that as well. It would still, fundamentally, it wouldn't change.
I just don't know how you know what the board's thinking without.
Sure.
That's there.
It will be in the minutes that we don't have, that we're not, we haven't taken a vote. It's been presented to us. I'm happy to make a motion that we take no action on the license based on the recommendation of the DCG. If that's cleaner, that doesn't matter.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. It is a vote.
So therefore, you are all set. There's no opposition to it. It will go on to, through the state procedure, as you know. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Through the chair, if you would mind, we have a couple of items that employees are here for, so to try to get those off the docket first. I think I just gave you, I'm sorry. I listened and then I took it.
On the motion, we move up item 6A.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote. So 6A, we have DDIS solid waste and recycling, new program for the residents for hazardous waste disposal, and we have Darling Coil.
Good evening.
In the past, we've always asked our department heads to sit at the table with us. I always, my first meeting, it's like, why are they marooned out in the middle of the floor? It would go for members of the public as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Quill.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me. So I wanted to share with you a program that Board of Health has been reviewing and looking at, and would like to present it to you. As you may recall, last month, we had a very successful Household Hazardous Waste Day event at the Horgan Ice Arena, and that was the first event that we've had in, I think it's four years. Due to the pandemic and all sorts of challenges with that, we normally have a household hazardous waste event every two years. So with the delay, we had a great event. We had over 300 cars participate, and that is a free event for the community. Auburn residents, it's open to Auburn residents only, and Auburn residents are able to bring their household hazardous waste at no charge. Very organized. We have a lot of participation from the community. We had the scouts, we had the masons, we have central mass mosquito control, we have all sorts of people. The CERT team was key in helping us move people through that event, and it was an awesome success. Inevitably, after the event, we always have somebody call almost like the next day saying, I missed the event and I have a whole bunch of hazardous waste. How can I get, how can I get rid of these wastes? So in years past, we would tell them to just please, you know, save it for the next event for free. Or we have worked in the past with a company called NEDT, and they are located in Sutton, you know, close by. And they, they are basically a household hazardous waste company that accepts waste at their facility. So they're a brick-and-mortar facility located in Sutton, very easy to get to, about 15 to 20 minutes right off of 146. And in our relationship over the years, we've called on all different types of things, and they have been very helpful with us. Just to put it in perspective, because this is actually information, we've been, you know, having people use that as an option. In the past three years, we had over 20 to almost 40 people a year go there to get rid of their waste. So they actually track residents, where they live and where the waste comes from. So this has been a place that our Auburn residents have been using. So fast forward to today, the, a couple of months ago, I came to you to let you know that we were going to be applying for our annual RDP grant. So that is a grant through the Department of Environmental Protection, and it allows us to apply for points when we do good things for the community, when we help people figure out how to get rid of hard-to-manage wastes. One of those, one of those options that we looked at this year, which is brand-new for us, is having a relationship, a contract with a company. So that company, NEDT, you're going to do a prepayment of an amount of money. They base it on a formula. So DEP has a formula that you base it on, your population. And you basically do a prepayment of the grant funds. So this doesn't cost us anything in the budget. It's for doing the work that we're already doing, all the good things, and the state gives us money. As part of that money, we would like to try this program. So Residential Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Program. So it gives our residents an option if you have hazardous waste and you are cleaning out a house, or you have a, sometimes a family member has to move suddenly, or you have a parent that passes, and you have to get that waste out and disposed of in a proper way, instead of putting it in the, in the regular trash. It's not allowed in the regular trash. But to give people an option, this will give us a prepayment to NEDT, and will give every household $50. So if you're going there with waste, you've got a $50 credit to drop off the waste. So we feel like it's a win-win situation. We're using grant money. If we do this program, the state recognizes that you're actually trying to do good for the community and help people get rid of hard-to-dispose of waste. And so they actually give you more points, and those points relate to money. So I think it approximately comes out to be, we're paying $3,000 to get started on the program, and I think we get about a little over $2,000 from the state to be able to offer this program. So we would like to try it, and we're hoping that people will use it as an option. Doesn't mean that we're going to stop doing our hazardous waste events. We feel like they're still very, you know, very much needed, but this is a nice community program to start. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Based on the $3,000, it'd be about 60 households. You said about 20 to 40, is there going to be marketing for people so they know? Or is it still going to be when they call you, you can recommend they go there?
Great. Thank you for asking. So we have a, we have a flyer that, we've got a draft flyer that we've prepared, and we are in the process right now of getting like the finances to be able to do the prepayment. So once we have the payment at NEDT, then we would officially announce the program as starting. So this was, you know, to let you know about the program, but we'll have like an official start when people can go there. So we would advertise this, and should we have great participation, and we have people go, and we use up that $3,000, NEDT will actually contact us, and they'll say, you know, your program's going very well. This is how many people have used the program. And they'll ask if we want to add more to basically the account. We can use our grant dollars towards more. We figured we would start out small, not knowing if people would use it. But we would figure out, we'd start with a minimum amount, see how it goes, and then assess it in the next fiscal year.
It says per household, so when you go there, you show your license or whatever. They'll track that, so if I tried to go again, I wouldn't get another $50 on?
That's correct. So we, we did recognize that may be a challenge, you know, but they do, they do check IDs. And obviously, you know, if people are going there, they're also going to help them understand there's a successful program. understand there's a successful program already going on with the Board of Health for some items. So we have a, a great mercury program and batteries. We take those for free. There's no charge for those. So we actually took those off of what they would, they would charge. So we want to utilize, you know, the resources that we have for the residents already. But yes, they will keep track of it and they will actually give us a report monthly if needed. It's a minimum quarterly report, but we'll have a listing of all the people that are attending. Does that answer your question?
No, not at all. Selfishly, I have to deal with buyers doing walkthroughs and household hazardous waste being left behind on more times than I want to talk about it. So it'll make my life easier.
Wonderful. We're really excited. We think this is a really good program to start in the community. We'll see how it's, see how it's received and then we can report back in a year.
Excellent. No votes needed on that one?
No. Good job, Darling. Thank you. You and your, your department, I know it's a lot of work, but it's going to be a great program.
Absolutely. So Eileen and Colleen are a big part of this. And we, we help people every day by, by looking for ways to do this. One, one more item you have in your packet. I just wanted to just let you know, there's a, an event that's coming up at the end of August. It's actually Saturday, August 27th. And it's, it's called Zap. It's Zero Away Pollution. It's a 50th anniversary of the first major cleanup of the Blackstone River. And as Auburn being one of the Blackstone communities and we've got this awesome resource right near us, this is a pretty big deal. They're, all, all they're asking for people to do is basically clean up litter. Clean up litter around waterways, clean up litter in your neighborhood. Just clean up litter on that day and recognize that you're making a difference. The town of Auburn, so you can either go to the Blackstone. They have all sorts of events set up along the riverway. Or if anybody's interested in Auburn, we're hoping to do kind of our own little mini cleanup. We know that people have come out several times this year. We did a townwide cleanup day and the Hazardous Waste Day. This is one more event. We just feel like it's, you know, people are interested and we have some volunteers that want to help out that day for a couple of hours in the morning. To please contact the Board of Health, we're happy to direct them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
See you.
And we'll need a motion to move up item six E. Second. All those in favor?
So through the chair, if I could ask Nick Schwartz, who is our D P W deputy and I should say assistant director, still in fire, let go with the deputy. Our assistant D P W director and our sewer commissioner. Thank you for taking us out of order. So Nick, we're on the item of the ARPA request for the Warren Road Pump Station. So we've, just by way of background, because we do have one new member, we have talked a little bit since ARPA funds were released. Oh, thank you. Thank you. We've talked a little bit about the use of ARPA funds and how can we save the taxpayer dollars? And one clear way of saving taxpayer dollars with these ARPA funds is to put it toward items that would end up on the C I P or we have to fund anyway. We do keep looking for grant funds for a lot of our sewer needs, but there are some sewer needs that are really priority. I wouldn't go as far as to say urgent, but if we don't address it quickly, we could have an urgent problem. So we're here before you today to explain the Warren Road Pump Station and what we're looking for. So is, do you want to speak to that? Do you want Ed to cover it?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about it.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks.
Thank you for having me. So again, my name's Nick Schwartz. I'm the Sewer Superintendent, Assistant D P W Director. So what we're requesting is ARPA funds to cover for the replacement of the Warren Road wastewater pumping station. It is an old style ejector pumping station. It's the last of its kind that we have in the town. We've gone through the process of replacing the rest of this type of pump stations. The last one we have. So this was, station was built in the 70s, 1975. It's reached the end of its useful life. Due to the age and condition of the equipment, high cost of replacement and the difficulty of getting these obsolete parts for this old style of pneumatic ejector pump, we'd be looking to replace the station sometime in the near future. This is something that would be qualified under ARPA funding. So it's one of our highest priorities in the department to get done. Depending on the way that the project is designed and how the cost estimates come in, it may involve replacement of the 900 feet of force main as well. But we'll have to see how, how the design would come in.
Eddie, Ed, did you want to add on to that or?
No, I think Nick, I think did a good job recapping that for you. We, Julie and I were just having a discussion about, you know, what's available currently in the ARPA funds. And we're just kind of going through what's, what's already been committed. So out about the 5.1, we estimate, and I apologize, I should have run a report to bring that balance in. I think we committed about $600,000 so far through various votes that the board has taken. We did the impact shifts, we did the fire study, we did A Y F S for a three-year period. We did a sum of money initially for health-related COVID expenditures, about $75,000, I believe. And a few other miscellaneous votes that the board took. So the bulk of the ARPA funds is still available. There are several projects and ideas that have come to the board that are, are up for consideration. But we talked about this early on, knowing that this would be a good use of the ARPA funds.
Any questions from the board members?
Yeah, when, when this pumping station is down, what is the effect to the residents in that area?
When the pumping station's down?
Yeah.
So the procedure for if the pumping station were to actually go down would be to, we would have to bypass pump. We'd have to get a company in who could run force main, 900 feet of force main up the road to discharge point. Or we would have to use our back truck to draft out of the upstream manhole of the station and kind of run continuously until the station got back online. It does have two pneumatic ejector pumps. So if one pump goes down, the other pump can remain operational. The hope would be that, you know, we could keep one in service at all times. But because of the age of this equipment, it's very difficult to get parts. There's long lead times if they're even available at all. They don't even make these things anymore. And just being generally very inefficient, we could get significant energy savings from going to a newer style station as well.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, if you demoed the building, what is the like? That was my real question.
Oh, like during the construction?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
So there's two ways that we could actually do the construction of this project. One would be to set up a temporary pumping system where they would, they would basically run a pipe. They could either run a pipe or use the existing force main, pump out of the upstream manhole at the station and just use the existing piping in the ground. So the contractor could set up a temporary bypass system. The other alternative would be to build the new station directly next to the existing station on the same parcel and then demo the old station. We would evaluate that during the design, one versus the other. They're both feasible options. In this case, the hope would be to actually reuse this building. Typically, a pumping station requires a significant amount of excavation, digging down 20 or more feet. You get into a lot of extra costs with that, de-watering, rock. If we can use the existing building foundation and repurpose it as a submersible type station, we could save a lot of money that way. So if we were going to go that route, it would probably require a temporary bypass system. But it's, it's very typical for this type of construction.
Okay, thank you.
I did hear one, or two, or three. So you answered one of my questions. So the other is, what does $1 million buy us? And is, there's nothing that makes me more nervous than, we're going to assess it and then, you know, we've got a million dollar item and now we're talking about, okay, well, we're going and we're going to assess it. So what are we getting for a million dollars?
Yes, so the, the cost estimate is a preliminary cost estimate based off of past projects and the uncertainty of sort of the market in the next year or so. So there's some contingencies on that and this is sort of pre-designed as well. But essentially, what that would buy is the demolition of the existing pump station. It's a brick and block building above ground station. It currently houses an emergency standby generator, air compressors, compressed air tank, motor starters, controls, other equipment. All of that would be demolished and disposed. It would, it currently has a 10-foot diameter concrete foundation that houses these ejector-style pots, I guess I'll just call them. And what we would do is we would demolish all of that, we would retain the foundation. That would be converted into a wet well. So essentially, this dry foundation that currently houses these pumps would be filled with wastewater and have a submersible style pumps. We would also likely need to design a new precast top on this to house hatches to access this underground station. There would be an above-ground electrical control panel that houses all of the new electrical components. So it'd have new electrical service, automatic transfer switch, control panels and remote telemetry unit in order to communicate with our SCADA system. There would be a new above-ground, likely oil-fueled generator for the belly tank. And this would also, the intention for this would be to replace the 900 feet of existing six-inch ductile iron force main with new, most likely four-inch PVC force main. That would be contingent on the cost estimates developed during design. It could be, it could be bid as an alternate. There's a potential that the station does not currently have three-phase power run to it. There's a lot of significant advantages of having three-phase power at a pump station like this. So we may need to run three-phase power from Southbridge Street, which is 1,500 or so feet away. So it would, it would potentially involve running that power there as well. Again, that would be fleshed out during design. But sort of broader view, it would be the demolition of this pump station and the replacement of it with a new submersible style pump station, new controls and a new force main.
So are we talking about a new exterior building?
So it would all be below ground. The only thing above ground would be a, an electrical enclosure, probably eight by eight stainless steel enclosure that houses all the electrical and control equipment. And there would be a generator above ground as well. Those would be the only things you'd see on the site.
Following up on Mrs. Roughly's point, when you're demolishing this building, what does that, we're demolishing this equipment, what does that mean for the residents? Because you are in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So what does this mean as far as noise, you know?
Right, yeah. And we, we would control all that with the, with the design specifications for the project. You know, we, we would set standard eight to four, eight to five working hours, depending on how we, how we typically do that. There's provisions in there to ensure that the contractors control noise and dust. Demolishing a building like this, it's a fairly quick process to actually take down the building. So we would need, during the design process, we would need to do hazardous materials inventory, make sure there's no asbestos or PCB issues that we would have to encounter. So demolishing could involve hazardous materials remediation. It may not. But it would all be done during the day, during the week. This is on the corner, it is in a residential area, it's on the corner of the street. It's sort of tucked away a little bit from the, some of the other houses, but it is, it is adjacent to them. So we would of course be mindful of the residents' traffic, making sure that emergency services are available, that it can get through and make sure nobody's driveways are blocked, that kind of thing. They'd mostly be working on the site. So I don't believe there'd be too much work in the road unless we do actually replace the force main. But all of that would be, would be accounted for.
My last question is, the bypass, what does that involve?
Well, the most efficient way to do a bypass that I've seen done is they would basically put two submersible pumps in either the upstream wet well, the upstream manhole that goes into the station or if it's determined that, in order to do that, you have to allow the, the manhole to surcharge and then be drawn down. We would first need to analyze how much surcharge could potentially have an impact on the upstream, upstream residents, if any of that could cause some potential flooding or clogging issues. If it can be done that way, they can use that manhole. If not, they would need to add a temporary manhole with sort of a sump. They would install two pumps, one as a backup, as well as a float system with a backup as well and an alarming system that allows the contractor to be called and respond if there's any issues with their temporary bypass system. Some systems involve running a pipe all the way up the road to the discharge point. But in a case like this, we could actually have them tie into the existing force main. So they would basically just run a pipe right underground, tie into the existing force main. Then they would build their new station and then tie that into the existing force main. And then that station would be, could be online. A second scenario that needs a bypass would be if we replace the force main itself. If we replace it in the same alignment as the existing force main, it could require an additional bypass. If we replace it right next to the existing pipe, then it would not. Or if we use a trenchless technology like pipe bursting or something like that where we sleeve it within the existing pipe, you know, that, it would sort of depend on how we, how we do that pipe replacement. But in, in either way, it would be fairly unobtrusive to the residents.
How are they going to be notified when work's going to begin? And how are they going to reach out to whoever they need to in the case of an emergency?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of the question.
How are the residents going to be notified? And how will they know who to contact should something happen that they're unsure of how to address?
Sure, yeah, I mean, there, there could be a public outreach component to it where we, we reach out to the neighbors of that street to let them know that the work is upcoming. We usually would reach out to the adjacent neighbors anyways. Anybody who would be tied in along the force main alignment, if we are replacing the force main, can be notified of that. They'd be directed to call the sewer department office and likely speak to myself. But yes, we, we would notify the residents prior to doing construction work in that area.
Are we talking door to door or are we talking a letter in the mail?
We'd have to talk about how we were going to do that. We haven't quite fleshed that out to this point. But, you know, I'm, I'm certainly open to, if the board is, prefers a certain way, you know, I'm, I'm certainly open to.
My preference, once you get to a point where you're at a design phase and you're going to get ready, is to actually have a meeting
Yep.
up here with the residents so that they can ask their questions and understand what the process is going to be. That would be my preference, but I'm one of five, so.
Yeah, of course. And we've gone door to door in the past. We are currently working on a project on Rose Lane. It's actually partially in Auburn, partially in Worcester, where we, we've gone door to door with those residents as well. We are doing sewer system evaluation study right now where we went door to door. And we've also used the reverse 911 system. We've used our Facebook notifications, we have notifications on the website. So, you know, we have a lot of different ways to reach out to, to everybody there. But, you know, the more outreach, the better because the more people know about the project, you know, the more they know what to expect.
Yeah, I just think an in-person meeting is preferable to all of those things because, or in addition to them, because a lot of people aren't on those things. They may not know until the day of and suddenly you're getting flooded with calls or up here is getting flooded with calls, like what's going on? We don't understand, you know, so. And especially when you're dealing with sewer, which is obviously, as you well know, certainly not something any of us want visiting us in our home.
Right.
It's, it's a little more than your average, you know, town activity.
Yes, of course. And then nobody would see any disruption in their, in their sewer service. It would really just be the construction in the area that would have no effect on them.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I can just, first of all, I want to thank Nick just for the great job he's doing on this. As you can tell, he knows, he knows his stuff, so to speak, and he's, he's very good at this. Also want to thank he and Joanna also for the outreach that they recently did in a neighborhood where we're doing some testing of sewer, where there may be smoke. And I think we had let you know, we used a combination of a number of different things, including letters too. So we can certainly look at all mechanisms, you know, the, the more the better. Just to respond to Mr. Carpenter's question a little bit also, as far as we never know what it's going to cost. We don't know what it's going to cost until it's designed and we go out to bid. And that's a problem with any of these projects. We can't get a price until we have bid specs. We can't get bid specs until we have a design. So we have to have it designed, we have to have the bid docs written up. Then we have to go out to bid under procurement laws from S G M law. There are a number of different procurement laws that may apply to this. It may not be a straight 30B, it may be a 139. There are a number of different chapters that we have to look at. So unfortunately, the hard part of making an estimate is, as Nick said, we're trying to look at stations that we've replaced in the past. What was the cost then? What would that cost be in today's dollars? Literally, as things are being developed and put out to bid, the prices are going up and up and up because of the supply chain. We met with someone the other day who was telling us. We met with someone the other day who was telling us, a developer who was telling us that he has to wait a year for some piping, for some water issues. So that, in that year, a lot of increases could happen to the prices. So this is our best estimate at the moment. We didn't want to come in asking for too much. We put in a little contingency, but quite honestly, similar to Camp Leesin, we could end up coming back after it goes out to bid to say, you know what, these are the prices, this is the market.
Playgrounds, too, I remember last year.
The playgrounds, the playgrounds went up 50% in less than a year. You know, at one point, we were quoted 50,000, and then it was six months later, we were quoted 75,000. And if we didn't get the order in by, I think it was the end of November, that was going to go up another 25,000. So some things we just can't control, so I don't want to tell the board that a million dollars is definitely going to do it. We think it will, but we don't know until we get the actual numbers down, and we actually go out to bid and hear from contractors as to what they're going to charge us.
Just being optimistic, everything comes in well under. What happens to the funds?
Great, then they're still in the ARPA, they're still in the ARPA funding.
And then if they go over, you have to come back. What does it cost for engineering?
Typically, so the engineering I've included in this estimate, that's typically around 20%. Usually you'll see around 8% for design engineering and 12% for construction-phase engineering, bidding-phase services. And we can also, what I typically like to do is procure, get an engineer signed on for design-phase services, go through bidding, and then see what we have for construction costs, and then kind of tailor the design, the construction-phase engineering, you know. If we have enough money for them for full-time construction observation, for example, great. If not, you know, we can sort of figure it out at that point.
So would 300,000 get you to that point, where you'd be able to come back and tell us what a hard cost would be?
Sorry.
Would 300,000 get you to that point, where you could tell us what the actual cost is? I know right now you're estimating.
Right, through the chair, I'll just, we won't have an actual cost till it goes out to bid.
So what will, how much will it cost to get you to that point?
So we'll have to do the engineering, and then they would do the bid docs. So you're saying 20% is what we're assuming, which is about 200,000.
Yeah, 20% would be design and construction-phase engineering. So typically, design and engineering could be 8%, I'd have to get proposals.
That's why I said 300,000, because that gets you, you know, 30%.
But we won't know what the total cost is until we receive those quotes back from contractors.
And then we could allocate the money at that point? Because again, like, if you're going to ask for, we have 5 million left, but if you're asking for 5 million at that point?
Well, part of the issue is you cannot enter into a contract with any vendor unless the money is in place to pay the full price of the contract. So we wouldn't be able to go out to, we could go out to bid for a project with a contingency that the funding would be approved after the bids come in, but once we're not, you might not get the same bid if it's a contingent bid. So generally, you have to have the money in place, you have to have the money in place before you can sign any contract.
So again, being optimistic, I'm hoping prices will come down in the future, as, you know, things hit that critical mass and they start backing down. So I think we might be in a more favorable position. But again, there's so many unknowns. Again, I'd rather the ARPA funds than the taxpayer, you know, being hit on the budget. But just to say, and I'm not questioning that you did the effort, you're guessing as best as you can. I'm just thinking, what do we get? Can we allocate funds to get to that point where we'll have an answer and we can certainly allocate more funds to that? I don't know what that phase is, but just to...
Yeah, I would have to check with town council if we can put an RFP out for a project without having the funds allocated to pay for the project.
But I would also say, once your design drawings are done, your construction documents are done, you can get a better estimate, unless those have already been done, and that's why you're going to estimate it off.
No, you are correct. We could have a better estimate by the time the construction, the design is done. So it sounds like you're proposing we would get some amount to get us through design and potentially bidding, and then come back for more once we have the bids. And again, I don't know how it works from a procurement standpoint, if that's an issue or not. But I would say that it would be very beneficial for the town from a cost standpoint to get this designed as quickly as possible and out to bid, so the contractors are able to bid on this by this winter, because that's when the most favorable bidding climate is, when contractors lining up their work for the next year, especially when they're able to get their lead time items in over the winter, and then they can start construction in the spring. So as long as it doesn't, you know, slow that process down.
And through the chair, I think the important part is, however the board wants to move forward, obviously we will. I would have to just check with town council if we can put an RFP out or a bid out without having the funds in place, and let's assume we can. Then the flip side is, if you allocate up to a million dollars in ARPA funds, and we use 800,000, then the other 200,000 is still there, so it hasn't been used. The only thing that can be used is what the board votes it to be used for. So even if there was excess, if the board voted a million dollars for the project, and the project came in at 900, we couldn't spend that on anything else. It can only be spent on the project that the board would support.
And...
I don't know if that...
Conversely, if the project, you needed more money for it, you'd still have to come back to us. I don't know that we'd get to a point, knowing that this is urgent and required, that we would say no. I mean, barring this going up by, you know, 100%. So I don't necessarily think that going back to town council and sitting on our hands longer versus, let's get to spending this money, this has been a priority from day one, I don't think it's been clear amongst all town administration and this board that this has been a priority. So that's my position, is I think we should vote to go forward now.
I think what we heard, we don't have to go to bidding, and we'll have a better estimate. That would be if we take it to design, and we get some customers there who have a better than 1 million, we might know 2 million at that point. I think that's, and what we're here to do is make the right decisions, we don't have all the information. I don't want to hold anything up, but at the same time, 1 million is a round number. As you put the numbers together, that could be how it came out.
Yeah.
I feel like, you know, 1 million. Like, no, I'd like to see more, that's...
And I was going to make a comment about that, it does look like a big round number, like, hey, let's just say a million dollars. But it is based off of actual projects that have been done recently. We just did four of these in the past couple of years. Worcester is in the process of doing three right now, that my former firm and myself designed and put out the bid. I'm familiar with how much these stations done in this exact same way cost. That being said, there's contingency in there for the way that the market's going right now. Lead time issues, things like that. So the number is, it's a conservative number, but it is, it's realistic.
Any other, just one more, because, you know, as every politician will tell you, nothing annoys us more than people characterize our words in ways that we don't intend it. And, you know, what Mr. Chambers was talking about is exactly what I'm talking about, is how do we get to a number that we can be more comfortable with? So it's not questioning anybody, it's simply asking a question, which is what we're here for. I am somewhat in sympathy with Mr. Chambers' idea of, let's do the design and then see where we're at. So, you know, obviously, it's a matter of the board, but I appreciate, you know, your explanations, and I also know that you wouldn't have been hired in the town of Auburn if you weren't qualified for the job that you had. So, you know, I think I know, after eight years, a few things. But anyways, with that, yield the floor, as they used to say.
My only concern with waiting to get a better estimate, I kind of agree with Scott, is that we should just move forward. My only concern with waiting to get a better estimate of what it's actually going to be is then we have pushed it out to waiting till there's another selected meeting, and there's, you know, so that I would be in favor of doing the million dollars.
So I would say with, things take time, you're going to have to do design, you have a schedule, there's going to be delays there.
Guys, I got to cut you off, we got to go through the chair, I'm losing control of my meetings a little bit. So please wait till you get acknowledged by the chair.
So with that, do we have a vote? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve 300,000 for design documents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll go one by one. Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah.
Ms. Ruthley?
No.
I just blanked on you, Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
And I am a no.
So through the chair, just per the charter, you need three votes for anything to pass, so obviously, that didn't pass.
Here we are on a four-man board. Do we have another motion?
I would make a motion to go forward with the million dollars.
Do we have a second?
One of these.
I'll second. And Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
No.
And I'm a yes. So we are stuck.
So at this point, right, we can't make any...
I would make a motion that we table it to the next meeting, ask the town manager to seek further guidance on the procurement, because if this is a stumbling block, then that would perhaps dislodge a vote. That would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
So through the chair, just, I just, for my own purposes, want to clarify, let's assume that we find out that this project is going to be 800,000 dollars. I think, would the board, would the board support it? If, my same question is, what if we find out the project is 2 million dollars? So my concern is to spend money on design, not knowing if we're going forward with the project. So I don't know if that triggers any, I'm concerned about ARPA, right? I don't know. Maybe there's no problem, but can you spend money on design for a project that you may not actually fund?
That you may not.
Right. And I don't know the answer to that.
Does ARPA allow you to do exploratory funding?
And I don't know the answer. Right now, I think we're probably okay, but I raise it because we may see Tom Zidellis tomorrow morning, who may say, you can't design a project and not commit to spend it, because you just said you're using it to address a sewer infrastructure problem. So if we don't address the sewer infrastructure problem, did we need ARPA? The only thing that makes me think maybe we can do that is we did use it as a revenue, under the category of revenue loss, which gives you a little bit more flexibility under ARPA to use it for different things. We just haven't, this is new to us, this is, we just don't know this yet. So I don't want to say that it's not going to be a problem, I just raised it as a potential problem. So, no, you're my concern.
Through the chair. So then I would love to make a motion to approve 300,000 for the project, and you come back and tell us what the project would actually be at that point.
I think that's not what Ms. Jacobson just said, I think she said she doesn't even know if we could use ARPA dollars to explore, if we haven't said we're going forward with such a process.
It wasn't for exploring, it's for you to go ahead and start doing it, and then you come back and tell us what it actually is. So it's semantics with the words, it's not for just design, then you run out of money at design, and you come back. I think that helps with the...
And if I may just add, my biggest concern is getting the design started as soon as possible. So however the board decides to go forward with that, I think it's, it would be beneficial for the town from a cost standpoint, regardless of which way we go, to get that started one way or the other.
Through the chair, can we reconsider with that?
We can reconsider anything, absolutely. Ms. Jacobson, do you have any concerns about that? Do you want town councils input first?
I think I'm a little bit more concerned about just the use of the ARPA dollars. Maybe that can be resolved, just got to think outside the box for a second, so forgive me for thinking out loud, but maybe it can be resolved, what if the board took a vote to support 300,000 in ARPA funding for the design, but approves of the project? The board approves of the project, and Phase 1 is approving 300,000 for design, Phase 2 will be to approve the remaining dollars. So you, we know we're designing it and we're building it. That's a little different than the vote that you took just for the design, that would commit the board to spending the ARPA dollars to get the project done, whether it's less or whether it's more.
That's a reliable vote.
Phase 2, if that's what the board wants, we could come back. If the board wants to come back, I think that's what you want, is to come back with the dollar amount.
Through the chair, I think through the explanation, there are many different procedures that could take place, and I think each one of those will affect the total cost of the project, and they won't necessarily know, but they haven't even designed, so they don't know all the challenges. I think the expertise has shown some challenges, but I think through design, we probably know more. I'm more comfortable allocating the money, I'm not saying I don't need to go, but knowing that the design was done with, you know, with the right process, allocating. I'm not saying I would vote one way or the other in the future, so I can't, I support the project, but I don't know if I would support it if it was a 5 million dollar project, I think. So I wouldn't want to put a contingency that I approve the project, I approve of the idea of the project until we know more about that.
Under those circumstances, I'm not sure that the ARPA money would qualify for the design and engineering aspect if the project is not approved. So I would raise that concern as well.
And that's why I said if we allocated 300,000 for the project, and you come back to us and tell us different, once you have a better design, then we're still approving of the project. This cost, from what I understand, is an estimate, but we don't have anything behind it, so who's to say that the project doesn't cost 300,000?
I think what administration's saying is that, they don't know if ARPA would agree with semantics, and are, once the money's spent, the money's spent. If it wasn't, if we didn't take steps to fully approve the project, they could say that first 300,000 has to be recaptured.
I think if the board did not support a cost that came in greater than a million, I'm just saying, then it would force a town meeting action to authorize a borrowing to cover the expense that the study is providing for. So if the board did not want to support it through ARPA, then it would only have to, it would have to be funded through the ratepayers for a bond issue that they would pay over a period of years. This project needs to be done one way or another.
Yeah.
If it's not done through ARPA funds, I think the intent was to cover this through a long-term bond issue at some point in time. So this is not going to go away, money's got to get spent.
I would add that the intent is to value-engineer this as well, to do this in as cost-effective a way as possible. That's why I mentioned reusing existing foundations and repurposing them to avoid excavations. I don't expect we would run into quite the old runs that, I understand what your concern is, of course, but, you know, the intent is to minimize the cost of this project.
Could you see a scenario, and I'm not going to hold you to this, could you see a scenario where it costed 2-plus million dollars?
I am not going to try to predict the future, but I would be, I would not expect that, no.
Well, we can always split it in the middle. Just because we schedule one meeting in August doesn't mean we can't have another meeting in August, to give town administration time to talk to Mr. Zidellis, to talk to town council, and give us better answers. And that would be my recommendation, is, you know, this could be a one-item agenda, not, you know, a tree, and this would give them time to do what they need to do, and then we'd have our answers. And then either we're spending a million dollars, or we're spending something else, maybe. Who knows what we're going to be doing?
Or we're bonding it to the taxpayers, or we're spending ARPA funds.
Well, you know, I think you can reduce it any way you want to see it, but I think when you have a split board, I think it's time to compromise.
Time to resolution.
And my goal is to find a happy medium. I've been trying to find it for eight years, haven't found it yet, but I've got another year, so maybe I'll find it. So my recommendation is, let's have a meeting in, let's have our first meeting, give town administration their time to research it, and we'll come back, and then we'll know what we can do and what we can't do. Am I guys okay with that? I thought they called a special meeting in a second, you know?
Through the chair, I don't know how long it will take town council, so I will let you know as soon as we talk to him, and I don't know how long it will take Mr. Zidellis to research the ARPA regulations. So it may be August 22nd, that may be the earliest we can do this. I can't commit without knowing what either of their schedules are. I don't know what their vacation schedules are, or how long it's going to take to do this. I, but just to reiterate Ed's point and Nick's, we need to get this done. So if ARPA funds can help... So if ARPA funds can help address that, then that's great, and if not, we have, we have to get it done. So we will have to go to town meeting for another way to do it. So either way, it is going to get done. Um, so, the problem is if we voted, as far as using the ARPA funds for design and then not going towards construction, you're still relying on town meeting vote, that'll be like designing a school, and then even though you have a school design, you still need a town meeting vote to appropriate the dollars to do the project. So, it's a little more-
And if I may, my recollection is that you have to show evidence that funding is in place in order to go to bid. So now whether that's changed or not, I don't know, but that, something's telling me that we've, we've crossed this bridge before.
Any more questions, concerns?
Yeah, through the chair, what is the ideal timeline for this? So if we go through design and then next spring are going through construction, is that the ideal timeline? My concern is if we go to town meeting, there's, there's a chance that town meeting is not going to go for it either, and, and then, then where are we?
Yeah, so, depending on the project, the ideal time to bid these is typically around January. That allows for a one-to-two month bidding period, and then maybe a month or so to review bids and get agreements together. Now you're into late winter to sign on a contractor, and they can start procuring equipment. With the long lead times of equipments that we're seeing now, we're seeing, for example, generators over a year, pumps are, can be several months. I, I would, I would expect that maybe around December would be a great time to put a project like this out to bid, December, January, maybe February at the latest, but I, 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 I think, you know, the earlier you can get it out there, early winter, the better the prices you're going to get. You know, it can be bid any time of year, but you see better prices when they're, when they're put out to bid at that time of year. So going through a design period, it depends, a lot of design firms are, are very busy right now, so you're seeing a lot of schedules being pushed out, a project that may have taken two months to design might take three. So if this project, this is a project that would likely take four to five months to design, going through geotechnical investigation, survey, permitting with CONCOM, hazardous building material surveys. So yes, a, a three-to-four month design period would be aggressive, and if we're, you know, we're coming into August now, so just keep, I guess keeping that in mind as much as possible.
So ideally, as soon as possible?
Ideally. From a cost perspective, we're trying to reduce the cost of the project.
Through the chair, I, even to add to that, we're hearing on the municipal level across the state that it's becoming increasingly challenging to get any engineers right now, because of all the federal dollars that are out there to all the communities. So there's ARPA dollars, there's the infrastructure, the federal infrastructure bill, the ARPA dollars, there's another economic development bill that just passed the Senate on Friday, that looks like, Thursday night, that looks like, that will probably be signed into, to law by the governor. If that happens, you're talking billions of dollars of projects, and the same amount of engineering firms. So, it does, I'm a little concerned about that, we've, we've had that concern running, we said, if, if all these projects go, who's going to do all the work? Where are these engineers going to come from? And it's, that's whether you vote for this today or not, that is just an issue that we have to keep in mind. So when we're talking about timelines, Nick's saying what would be an ideal, but that's assuming we actually get a firm who can take this project on.
We, we need to put it out to bid, and then we need to get a firm on board, so that process already takes potentially a month, you know, just before we even start. Just put that in perspective.
I mean, we can, we can get some of the answers from town council, but where town council won't be able to answer is whether the board should go forward in approval of the project or not. I mean, that's still going to be the question when we come back in August, is, is this a project that the board is going to support? Or does the board support it but through the ratepayers, as opposed to ARPA? Or is it a combination? Is it a combination of ratepayers and, and ARPA?
I don't think we're going to get any reconsideration for the full vote, and we can't afford otherwise.
Yep. So Mr. Carpenter's out of room, I don't want to necessarily talk about that, without him here, but I could reconsider a different number, we felt it was, it's still achievable, I, I've heard 800,000 thrown out there.
Oh, I just, through the chair, I just randomly said that as an example, if it came in at eight, I, I don't have any idea. I'm believing it would come in around a million, because that's the estimates that you worked up. When I say eight, I said eight for the reason that if it came in at eight, to answer your question, what happens to the other two? Nothing, it's never utilized. It doesn't come out, it stays in. It only comes out as you expend, as you get invoices.
Do you have an overall timeline that you were looking to achieve prior to this meeting?
For the, for the construction of this project?
Yeah, for the whole thing, so you just said about three months for design, and then, because, I mean, you're, you're saying about five months, and, I mean, we're already pushing the limit, so you came in expecting the money, December, you're still not fully ready to bid, right?
Uh, i- i- it depends on when we can procure, or when we can get an engineer on board. My, my, I guess, ideal timeline would be to have this designed and out to bid in the winter, ready for construction in the spring, and built by likely the summer or fall of next year.
And then lead time plays a lot into that.
It does.
Certain things are taking a year, so if you bid in December, it's not happening till December, you don't dig-
It, it depends on where lead times are at that time.
Through the chair, if I can just add something that just recently happened, and with a design firm. So we received $50,000 in stadium market in the FY '22 budget, and that was for the library sprinkler system. So, we received it in the state budget, it was approved, I'm going to say last August in the state budget. We didn't actually get our grant docs from the state until probably January or February. By that, at that time, it then took us a bit to get an engineer and firm on board, so now we were already six months behind what we expected. The engineering firm is also behind due to labor shortages, COVID, other, other issues that come up. So they were not able to finish the design in a three- or four-month period to even put it out to bid, which meant we had to go to the legislature a month ago and ask for legislative support. It's called a PAC, which means they're overriding the ability, as you know, with the, with funding in a budget, once June 30th comes, you can't carry that money into the next year. So without legislative approval, that $50,000 earmark couldn't be carried forward. So we found out it is tied in with the economic development bill. And if the economic development bill gets signed, and it did get passed through both houses, House and Senate, if that gets signed, then our PAC is approved, and then we can access the dollars. And the reason I, I say that is number one, just to briefly tell you about the library engineering, but to also just point out that this engineering firm, we've worked with them often, they're great. We've never had any delays with them ever, and this year we're experiencing significant delays. So I think your ideal timeline may not hold, depending on who we get. So I don't want to commit that this is the time we get it, this is our plan, this is what we're aiming for, but it all depends on the firm that we get. So is the board voting to, to, yeah, to direct to town administration?
It sounds like no matter what, there's going to be delays, so it would be probably best to get some recommendation from town council on how to proceed on that. Again, I, I don't know if I can approve what do we get, I know Mr. Carpenter asked, what do we get? I don't necessarily need to see the design drawings, but something more than a visual, I think, or contemplation. And, and we don't know what the market's going to be in two years, you know, if we're, and I say that because if you're going out to bid, like, things might pick up, they might not, we don't know what the economy's going to be. So it's our best guess, and as professionals, I'm sure you're using it and seeing what the market is. So I, I do believe that everything's kosher there, I just want to make sure that we're being responsible with it. I'm not trying to hold things up, but I think until we have more information, it's probably best.
So through the chair, a couple things, if that's the way the board wants, if you just take a vote, then I can go to town council with the question, but also just want to just clarify something from my way of thinking too. What if, and I think this is what made it rise on the priority list, what happens if the pump station goes down, and as you said, there are no more parts? So you do a temporary bypass, but if there are no more parts, the pump station goes down, we can't fix it?
We would have to find a way to fix it.
Through the chair, I believe he said temporary pumping of that, so I add a cost, and I think that's the world we live in, as, as things-
Right, so when it went down, I know you weren't here a couple of years ago, we had a pretty catastrophic incident where we had to have trucks come in, and that, I don't remember the cost of that, but it was an emergency, and we had to, we spent a lot of money with those trucks running 24/7.
Yeah.
Is that what we'd be facing?
No, so this is a much smaller pump station.
Okay.
I think you're referring to the Forest Main that broke on Sword Street, so this, this is a much lower flow station than that. It would be able to be handled by maybe one or two trucks, and they may, but they may need to run 24/7 until the issue gets resolved.
All right, that, that's good to hear, because I was still concerned, even if we, even if you had voted tonight, there's always that possibility that this is going to go down. So I'm just, in my mind, just trying to get a handle on, even if we're in the process of designing it and getting someone to build it, we still have a problem if it goes down, so we're, we're just hoping it doesn't, between the time, between now and the time we actually get a new one. And it's not as catastrophic as what we went through.
Would be as catastrophic.
It was very, that was a challenge that last term.
But it would be, you know, certainly would be a cost.
Okay, thanks.
Through the chair, where would the funds come for, from if it were to go down?
So I, I think we would have to call a, a emergency meeting of town meeting, and we would have to take some type of action to, to fund what's required to keep that station going.
Yeah, through the chair, when this was not the same, it was a similar situation on a larger scale. When that happened, as far as procurement goes, we, you just go ahead and you procure. So we were contacting companies to try to help us, because we didn't have the equipment to do it on our own. So we had to bring up companies in to do this, and there's something under the law called emergency procurement, so you don't have to go through the standard process of going out to bid, because it's an emergency. You document it, you send it to the IG, the AG, everybody, everybody else that has to know, and that covers you. But then as far as getting the money, you still need the appropriation to fund it. Last time, I think we had it in sewer retained earnings, but which requires a vote of town meeting.
Yeah, there are certain things that qualify under an emergency provision that would allow you to deficit spend. I'm not so sure this would qualify, but that's a discussion we'd have to have with DOR. If it didn't qualify, then we appropriated more money annually in sewer line repairs to deal with these catastrophic type events that are unforeseen, that provides some money at least to do a fix or, or a Band-Aid approach. I don't know if we're at a point where a Band-Aid is going to hold us, is going to carry us that long, given the uniqueness of the, of the part situation, they just don't manufacture them anymore, so I don't know.
Yeah, it would depend on the nature of the, of the failure, you know, how, how, how that would, how that would go.
Anyway, thanks, I, I just wanted to ask that and be clear too, because even moving forward, there's no guarantee that that's not going to go down. We can just hope that we're getting ahead of it proactively before that happens.
So the vote's been taken to table this, with the town manager seeking guidance of town council as to if we could peacefully fund this project.
Chairman, I don't think we actually took a vote. I know I made a motion, it was second.
Oh, we didn't, oh, my apologies.
We did, we have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
So if we are able to get all these answers prior to August 22nd, within enough notice time, we'll let you know. Uh, Mr. Chair, would you mind taking the next item out of order, because it's also Mr. Schwartz is here for the next one?
I have a motion to move up agenda item 6E.
A good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's the votes.
So Nick, can you explain this one? You've put a lot of work into this as well.
Yes, thank you. So this is the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Gap 3 Energy Grant for this year. So this is a grant that helps fund energy-saving initiatives, and one of the eligible entities for this grant is Waste Water Utilities. So, we learned about this grant opportunity maybe a month or two ago, and it aligned with one of our concerns that we're having as far as rising energy costs, that I'm sure we're all aware of. The sewer department has a very large energy budget to maintain all of our pumping stations, and that's going to see a sharp increase. So we're looking at potential energy-saving measures. Learning about this grant, it gave us a nice framework to sort of look at this. So we partnered with Guardian Energy, who's worked with the town on some other energy-saving projects in the past, and had them do a energy analysis at each of our 12 pumping stations to see if there are any opportunities for energy savings that would qualify under this grant opportunity. They did identify three pumping stations that would be potential candidates for VFD replacement projects. The way that these pumps are operated are with motor starters, and, and not to get too technical, I don't know how familiar everybody is with that, but essentially a motor starter either turns on the pump or turns it off. A VFD or variable frequency drive allows you to sort of turn a pump on gradually, turn it down gradually. It also allows you to run a pump at certain speeds as opposed to just on. So the Guardian Energy did calculations on how we currently run our pumping stations, and how we might be able to run our pumping station using these variable frequency drives. And they found that by ramping down the speed that the pumps are running at to, I believe it was about 80%, we saw a significant cost savings at two of our larger pumping stations, well, actually three of them. One of them, we decided that the cost benefit wasn't, wasn't quite good enough. So our, the two pumping stations that we targeted were the Holstrom Court and Sword Street Pumping Stations there. Two of our three largest pumping stations, the largest being the Pin Rock Pumping Station, which already has variable frequency drives on it. So by, by going to this motor control mechanism, that allows us to potentially save, have an annual cost savings of about $22,000, $22,620 is what they calculated a year. And with energy incentives, this, this grant program, it, the intent is to fill the gap where, where things are funded. So they, they require that the, the, the town has a minimum cost share of at least 10%, and there's a maximum grant for each applicant of $200,000. So by doing these two projects, the Holstrom Court Pumping Station and the Sword Street Pumping Station, we were able to maximize that grant opportunity of $200,000 while providing a 14% cost share from the town, from the sewer department. That also includes incentives from the energy provider of about just under $30,000 as well, to help fund this project. So we're, we're still working with this, with this consultant to, to flesh out any other potential cost impacts, but that would be the, the cost impact to the, the sewer department. $32,000 in order to fund a $262,000 project to replace these variable frequency drives.
Any questions, concerns from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Carpenter?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chambers?
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair, is, can ARPA funds be used on that, the $32,000? Or does it have to come from the sewer?
Yes, through the chair, ARPA funds, the way we've, we've set it up with the revenue loss category can be used for things that could come out of other sources. Would it meet, it would, it would meet an ARPA requirement, even if it was under a separate category of sewer infrastructure?
Those savings projected, were those at the 11 cents a kilowatt or the 17 cents?
The higher, no, the, I believe they projected it at the, the higher energy cost.
I'll be good now.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we vote to accept and expend up to 200,000 from the Massachusetts DEP Gap 3 funding for clean energy projects to upgrade the Holstrom Court and Sword Street Pumping Stations.
A second.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Here's the votes. And I put one of those on my pool, and I've already been saving money.
There you go. Good work.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
We'll let you know uh about this down so that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much.
Moving back to agenda item, uh, we are not going to be able to speak on a, uh, agenda item 5A is my understanding? Not be able to take action?
Uh, I think you can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I missed reading the email.
Oh, no, uh, yes. So, do you want me to give the background of this? Okay, so uh Mr. Will Liberty, as you know, made a public announcement that he was resigning from the board. He made that back in June. He submitted an email that's in your packet uh on Saturday, July 2nd, to the town clerk notifying her that he was resigning. He also attached a letter that was signed by his typed signature, uh, so not a wet signature as they call it, to the town clerk, and it was in that email. Uh, the issue is that the town clerk um is acting on the belief that you have to have, a letter of resignation has to be a wet signature. So we went back to Mass General Law uh that dictates resignation of elected officials. And it, I think it also applies to appointed, but it doesn't matter. For this case, it's elected and it does appoint, it does apply to that. And the law just states that a notice of resignation must be provided to the town clerk. It doesn't state the form of that notice, uh, it just says notice must be required. So the town clerk at this point has not accepted the resignation of Mr. Will Liberty and has uh commented that the board therefore can't go forward to vote for a special election to replace him until we have that wet signature. In the meantime, the chair and Ed and I were trying to figure this out before tonight's meeting because we needed to know if you're gonna be considering a special election. You have until September 5th to notify the town clerk if you want a special town election on the November ballot. So, because it's 64 days before the November ballot. Town council uh gave his opinion that the law does not require a wet signature. Uh, the town clerk said that the election division has told her that you need a wet signature. So she did reach out to them, because I said, we need something in writing to try to resolve this. So she reached out to them and they wrote back and said, it is their opinion that you need a wet signature.
Generally.
Generally was the word. However, they said, it's up to your town council, we don't give legal advice. And town council said, you don't need a wet signature. And the law is pretty clear that you don't need a wet signature. So the town clerk's concern was, well, what if someone sued and said that you had a special election and it wasn't valid? Town council, in the conference call that we had with him last week, felt that the law was very clear.
Town council provided some case law as well, which was very much in support of the wet signatures not necessarily being.
Correct, so there were two different routes to go. If, if you just take a plain reading of the law, a wet signature is not required. He did provide notice to the town clerk under the law. Uh, if someone were to challenge that, he would go back, he wanted to look at case law, he looked at the Amherst case. And under the Amherst case, uh, a notice was given to a different authority than it should have been given to, but the fact that this person notified another authority and the other authority accepted the notification, that made it a valid resignation. So town council's advice was for this board to take a vote to accept Mr. Will Liberty's resignation as he stated here at a meeting and as he wrote to the town clerk. If this board accepts that resignation under the Amherst case, the resignation has been accepted. It doesn't matter if it was the town clerk or this board, it's been accepted. And he felt comfortable that no matter which way you looked at this, that that was sufficient. Now, all that being said, the chair has, we've tried to reach out to Mr. Will Liberty. He's obviously at boot camp, which makes it a little more challenging.
I, I did look at the laws myself, and I, I completely agree with everything Ms. Jacobson stated. I further uh overnighted uh Mr. Will Liberty a letter, asking to just seeing how he's doing, giving him support, and then also letting him know of this matter. And then I pre-printed a standard form resignation along with a return envelope all FedEx. So hoping that he, I don't know how often he can, maybe Mr. Chambers might know how often he gets his mail.
Um, for six weeks.
That's, that was my concern.
And that was our concern. So uh, the problem is if the town clerk was just, and I understand it, you know, she, she was under the uh impression that it had to be a wet signature, that has been cleared up, we're, we're good to go with this. She wasn't sure why we had to vote tonight, and I explained a couple of things. Number one, Mr. Will Liberty is at boot camp for 12 weeks, uh, so you may not hear back from him for 12 weeks. And she had also sent a letter to him and hadn't received any response. And you had given us his address at boot camp, we sent it there as well. Uh, the other issue is, at the August meeting, I know Mrs. Ruffley uh will be on vacation at your August meeting. So there's a slight chance if someone were to get sick, and in this pandemic, you don't know, you might not have a qualm to meet in August uh to even vote. Or you might not get, even if you had all four, which you're not, you're only gonna have three. Even if all three were here, you may not have.
Agreement.
Uh, agreement on it. And then you don't have a meeting until after September 5th. Uh, and with Labor Day, there was no way to figure out a meeting in there. So that's why we wanted to get it on the agenda for tonight, for the board to at least consider and possibly vote to have a special election and notify her by September 5th. My, my feeling is, if you get the letter from Mr. Will Liberty before then, it's a moot point. You've got it, it's been accepted, and you've already taken the vote.
And further, we could vote at the next meeting to reaffirm our previous vote now that the wet signature were in, if we wanted to get procedural with it. Um, but I do feel based on the body of research that's been collected, I think we have full authority to call for a special, uh, for a special election. So with that, I believe also our, our, I guess, symbolic action of accepting his resignation further just bolsters our commission.
Right, that was town council's opinion, that the, the board should take a vote to accept his resignation based on the letter that he submitted, I guess, to the, the chair was also on it, as well as from his verbal communication to you, and clearly he is not here anymore. And then he thought that that would withstand any appeal from anyone who might say you didn't have the authority because there's case law to say that you do. And under the law, then trigger the next law, and under the next law, the board is the one that schedules a, a special town meeting.
Do you have any questions, concerns? Yeah, Mr. Carpenter?
We don't, under the normal course of things, accept resignations. And with the town clerk going to the state authorities and talking to the Elections Commission, I'm not going to Bigfoot the town clerk. She is the appropriate person to accept this resignation, not this board. Um, and I'm sure there's been any number of cases where, where things have happened. But myself, we don't do that, we've never done it. So I'm not, and again, out of respect for the town clerk and the work that she does, I am not going to vote to accept a resignation that is properly within the province of her office and not this one.
Any further questions, concerns from the boardroom?
Through the chair, is there anything prohibiting us to take this vote?
Uh, there is not, this is my meeting, and we can absolutely take this vote.
Okay.
And through the chair, just to, to be clear, the attorneys from the state that Ms. Grimo did contact said that they would not provide a legal opinion, that we had to rely on town council. And then I sent them what town council had written, and that's, that's what we have to go by.
Okay.
So, James?
We normally don't accept resignations, but town councils recommend we do because of the nature brought forth by the clerk?
It's due to the clerk's interpretation of the statute, due to some guidance she received from the Elections Commission. However, none of these bodies want to give prospective legal opinions. They, they don't by their very function that they don't give prospective legal opinions. So uh, we're kind of, they're kind of telling us, make a decision. Uh, we're doing this to say, look, we think that Tristan sat up here in this, in my seat uh and resigned, wrote a letter, um, and now we have some disagreement as to the validity of this resignation. Though we all know in substance, Tristan has resigned, nobody's receiving that point. Uh, so this symbolic action, if you want to call it that, just further bolsters the position that, yes, we can call a special election.
And I was gonna say, and the reason for this is so we can call a special election?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept Tristan Will Liberty's resignation from the Board of Slezmen for his email resignation to the town clerk.
Can I amend that, to say based on town council feedback?
And ask her to do that?
Based on town council's feedback.
I, I wanted to ask the chair.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
And Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, it is a vote.
So through the chair, given that, per a phone call, a discussion with uh town council, he felt that whether you took that or not, it was, it was within the law anyway, now you have double.
Yes.
Insurance that it was, so he said you could now vote on a special town meeting.
All right, so then we move to uh the vote to call a special election on November 8th to fill the vacancy uh created by Mr. Will Liberty's resignation. Yes.
Do we know the cost of a special election?
Through the chair, yeah, it's about $10,000 was the estimate of the town clerk. The reason for that is if you hold it on the state elections, you have to have, it can't be on a state ballot. It has to be on a separate, it has to be a separate special election, it could be on the same day. You may need extra poll workers, but most importantly, you need another whole set of ballots. And you have to have as many ballots at that election as the state sends out. So you're talking a lot of ballots, uh, so that was her best estimate on the cost.
Kind of a statement that this election would put someone in office in November. And typically it would be in May.
That's right.
And do we know what?
Wait, uh, that point was Mr. Liberty's.
Uh, under the law, when there's a vacancy on an elected position.
He does go to the next.
It goes to the next uh election, so.
And so with that, so from November to May, do we know what kind of activity we expect? I mean, uh, obviously we do commit um licensing and some other stuff, but is there anything pressing where we need a?
There's, there's the annual tax split vote, there's uh emergency matters that come before.
Would they be here before?
No.
Maybe within a week, you know, we usually take tax classification in November.
It's normally mid-November.
So they might only have a week.
Uh, yeah, so I, I think I asked it and then I started talking, because that's what I do. Um, besides that, any, there's tax, tax classification. Would you town manager review, when do, when is that, April?
We have the application of ARPA funds coming up. I mean, it's tough to say, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's gonna be a mundane next year, you know, if things will come up. And a functioning board is required and, uh, forgive me, but we, we're not functioning that much tonight with these split votes, so.
Um, I think that functions.
And through the board, as, as far as the, um, through the chair, as far as the town manager evaluation, you probably won't have that this year because I'm here until the end of January. And then you probably wouldn't have it, you know, I won't be here, so it wouldn't be on me, and Ed would only have been here two months, so it wouldn't be on him either.
So it could benefit us to work together a little bit better, I don't know, I'm, not that we don't work together. I don't know the history, I, I think Dan's more of a historian on subjects, but I would imagine the board has gone through changes with four members, and I just don't see the.
Well, I'll be clear, I want a five-person board.
It's a good thing there are four of us now. Mr. Chairman, there's no need to jump this six months. It's an expense that we don't need. It's, as someone who's overseen elections, it's problematic from a different ballot situation. There, there's a lot of logistics that go into holding an election. And you're going to be holding this in November, which is going to be an avalanche of people voting because you're voting for a new governor, you're voting for a new congressman potentially, and everybody else. Um, it, it's just not, it is not the situation that we were in two years ago when Mr. Lucas didn't take his seat. We could not function as a three-person board, we can function as a four-person board. And I don't really see the benefit of electing somebody in November because I think we all sitting up here would say, it's a learning curve, I'm still learning eight years in. So to sit there and say to somebody, let's get you elected in November, and a week later, one of the most consequential votes you're ever gonna take is gonna happen. You're not gonna be able to get that person up to speed. You're not gonna be able to get that, a person who's going to be making a vote. You're gonna, you're setting them up to fail. And, and, you know, again, we have an election in May, there'll be three seats, two of them will be for three-year terms, one will be for a unexpired term. You know, it, it just, to me, we are a functioning board. The fact that we don't necessarily all agree is why we're all getting elected because we all have different points of view, and you, our diversity is what brings us, which brings this board its strength. It isn't the fact that we all agree, it's gonna bring its strength. I think the diversity brings its strength in the discussion.
Our town charter allows for five, I think our town residents deserve five. Um, and, you know, agree to disagree on the point that, you know, if we just sit here and stay stagnant because there's two votes that may say the expenditures of money or movement in the town, then, then you are getting your way. So I understand the vote you're taking, but it's absolutely opposed to the way I feel about the way I feel and want this town run.
And that's a fair point, Mr. Chairman. I don't do it for my advantage. I think if you look at my voting record over 27 years, I think you, you've come to a different conclusion when I bring up points. You know, again, to my earlier point, there's nothing worse than characterizing what somebody's trying to say. I said what I said, that's my position, you have a different position. I respect it, but I don't agree with it. And I don't think we're stagnant, I don't think that we're going to fail. I think if you look at the history of the board, even when we had a five-member board, most votes were unanimous. They were not four to one, three to two, there were a couple, I can tell you, I remember them, but not very often. And I don't anticipate in the year ahead, we're gonna have a lot of two to two or three to one or anything else. I think you need to be a little more, you know, we all need to be a little more optimistic and, and look at each other and realize that we're all here for the same purpose, which is to actually move on and forward. And I think we've done that, and my predecessors have done it, and I'm sure my successors will do it. So I'm a four-member board, but it's not up to me whether we do it or not, other than my vote.
Okay.
Through the chair, I would also like to see a five-member board. Um, not only is this November election, it's gonna be, like voter turnout is gonna be great, and why not have another member on the board that had, was elected by a majority? When you have good voter turnout.
Absolutely. Do we? I think we know the vote, are we going to, does anybody wanna bring a motion forward?
I'll bring a motion that we do not vote to accept a special election.
Second. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruffley?
No.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And the chair is a no.
So through the chair, I, I'm, if we get a signed resignation from Mr. Will Liberty, I'll still let you all know. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just looking up Mass General Law, I want, I just want to have the right reference, and I can't find it that fast, my apologies. Um, but if we do get it, I'll let you know, uh, but it sounds like the board's taking a position anyway, so it won't, it wouldn't matter.
Okay. So with not calling and not passing, should we bring the motion to pass with? Take it up?
Well, I think maybe, I just wanna clarify the vote, so the vote you just took was to not have us call a special election.
Yeah.
So. Right, so if there's a motion for reconsideration, you could do a motion for reconsideration and see if there's, the vote would change. But if it doesn't change, then the motion not to call failed because you didn't get three to approve. You didn't get three to approve the motion to call, I know it's complicated.
So that back. Well, essentially no action.
No.
No action.
Correct.
We can't take action unless there's a majority. So you state that opposition at this time.
Correct. Yeah, like I said, the only change in that could be if another member who voted, I think under Robert Tools, if the member who voted against it changed their mind, they could call for reconsideration. Again, I'm not an expert on Robert Tools, but that could happen at any time.
Moving on to request the chief of police to assign police details to the polling site for September 20th. It's September 2022 primary election and November 2022 general election. This is required by statute.
Correct. Through the chair, this is on there. You did it before. And now the new election laws have required that you do this, but you did it before. So technically it's odd, but the wording in the law requires that the Board of Selectmen assign details. The Board of Selectmen under the town charter doesn't have the authority to assign details. The police chief does. So the only way that we can think to legally comply is to have you, the board, ask the police chief to assign details to the election, which is now a requirement, as you said, under the statute versus it used to be on an individual municipality basis. But we've always done that and the board's always done that.
Chair, it might be semantics, but can we request the police chief or do we have to request you to request the police chief?
That's a good point. I mean, you, technically you could ask the town manager to ask the police chief. He's the police chief. Yeah, you're right. But I, I think, I think it's fine by just saying that you're requesting the police chief. I think you'd be fine. Because I'm going to put it this way, I'm recommending it too. So just another, another new law that we have to comply with. The town clerk does have a lot right now with, with all these new laws coming out. And this is certainly one of them.
I would make a motion that we request the police chief to assign details to the polling sites or site, as it were, on September 2022 primary and the general election in November.
A second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you.
And moving on to appoint new member to serve on the flag redesign committee?
So through the chair, that is on there under Board of Selectmen because when Mr. LaLiberty, I want to say he resigned. You did accept his resignation, so technically I can say that. When Mr. Liberty resigned, he therefore is no longer on the flag committee. So he was representing the flag committee as a member of the board. So this board created that committee. This board could tweak the creation. You could have a member of yourselves serve on it, or you could see if we would be able to get another resident. I do know it was very difficult. At one point, we only had one resident who was interested, which was in board a committee of two. Now there's two, but there's not a third. You could, they, they would need to have three to function. So it, it's up to you. But the recommendation is that you, you probably appoint someone so the whole effort doesn't just fail because there's not enough members.
We know the status of that committee. I know that good voting and everything. Are they ready to present?
That I do know.
They, they did select, they selected a design or a couple of designs that they liked. And I think they wanted to go to the public and get more feedback on the few. They narrowed it down from, say, 30 or whatever amount of entries they had to a smaller amount. And they wanted then bring that back to the residents to see what ones of the ones that they chose to be finalists are. So they're not done. That's the bottom line. They're not done. I did, I did talk to Tristan before he left and asked him if he thought it was necessary to get somebody else or was the work of the committee done? And he said the work isn't done. They, they did a lot, but they're not done yet. They're not ready to make a recommendation.
Do we have any members willing to serve? So with that, does anybody want to make a motion that we seek to have a third member from the public? Some vote.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Okay, we will post the vacancy and can I throw something out there just in case? Let's say we get one application. Would the board consider amending their vote to say that if we get someone to apply for it, one person, that, that board would allow us to appoint that one person? Or do you want that one person to come in for an interview even if you have no other candidates? I'm just trying to streamline it for the person. If there's two applicants, then yes, you have to make a decision between two. It's your appointment. You'd have to bring them in. If we get one candidate.
I'll make a motion. We suspend the rule of the board that we need to have an interview if we have a single candidate. There's a rule that we have that come in.
Thank you. I think that would expedite it.
Rupert, what is the timeline on that application? Because if you get one, a week later you get another.
Well, we would put a deadline on it. So I would probably put a deadline on it before your next meeting to give them enough opportunity. It's still a month away. So we'll probably put a deadline on it of, let's say, August 16th. And that way you can get it on the agenda. And if there were two people, we could bring them in on the 22nd, if they're available.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to make, and I will make that motion that we suspend the rule should there be a sole candidate. We will, we can do the candidate.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oops. I don't see any gift acceptances, no proclamations and recognitions. Moving on to agenda item 5G, that's vote on the appointment of election workers for the year 2002, 2022, 2023. You have a list of those workers in your packets.
Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt them as submitted by the town clerk.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And vote on Board of Registarians appointments. And again.
I would make a motion that we appoint Sue Weagle to the vacancy.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Had a couple of discussions, but my apologies. No, that's fine.
You haven't said aye yet.
Correct, I have not.
I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
So I didn't know the candidates and I didn't know what the representation was from precincts and if that mix was still in line. I have no objections to what you guys said. I just.
So it's two and two. I do know Mr. D a little from serving on the committee. And I do know Ms. Bukowski. She used to be the director of the Urban Housing Authority. She was a town meeting member. She's held many different offices. So the composition is either, it's usually two and two. So two Republicans, which is now Mrs. Maris, who's been on for a long time, and Jerry, and I forget his last name, but I believe he got the big J. And it's recommended from the town committees. So the Democratic Town Committee, this is AC for them. So Mike McNamara would have been Democratic, number. So it's just replaced that.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, like in the Democratic side, is more than one precinct covered with that?
Well, the town clerk is the other Democrat on the committee, so she is automatically a member of the committee. So when I was on the board, Ellen was a member of the Republican Party. So we had her and Debbner who represented the Republican Committee and then the Democratic Committee was me and Mike.
Thank you.
Aye. All right, moving on to agenda item 5I, Drain Layers License for Doggawitz Construction LLC of Webster, Mass.
Motion to approve, provided all applicable requirements of the state and town on the area's departments, boards and commissions have been detailed. License subject to all conditions stated upon it, failure to comply with any of the all conditions shall invalidate license and render it null and void.
Second.
And discussion? One quick question. They don't need to, if it's a reapplication, I know they never, they didn't need to.
They don't need to come, they don't need to come before. They just need to have the sewer commission sign off.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Moving on to 5J, Drain Layers License, James J. Bork Services of Spencer, previously licensed as PV contracting.
Motion to approve based on our standard language.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. And on to Town Manager Items 6B.
Through the chair, this is an opportunity. We always use EMPG grant funds to fund Code Red. The state has put out a NOFO for, no, it's a funding availability, for excess grant funds for communities that didn't use their EMPG allocations. For other communities to go after those dollars on a competitive basis. They're specified to target shelter facilities and generators and shelter facilities. The timing of this is good because our primary shelter is at the high school and the high school is in need of two switches. And apparently those switches are no longer manufactured. So it, well, it's in need of repair. Some of what they need is no longer manufactured, so they have to get a different type of switch and rewire it. The cost of that is 30, we just got a quote, it's about $33,000. The grant will pay up to $50,000, so I'm asking for a vote to apply for up to 50. But the recent quote that we just got was about 33 and change. So it's a great opportunity to get them replaced. They have to be replaced.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Any match for us or is this just an out and out grant?
This, the match is normally in place, but they waived it. So there's no match. Yeah, it's a great opportunity. No, no match required.
And this covers all the expense to replace?
Yes. Yes. Joe Fahey's been great from the school department. He solicited a quote and then when some time went on, we weren't sure if we were, what the deadline was for this, so he went back out and got an adjusted quote. So we submitted an up-to-date grant application for the quote that we received. Once again, until we actually go out, we hope that that's the price. That's why I'm asking for up to 50 because there's an opportunity to go back to the state for more money because the cost came in higher. But I think that one's pretty good. The quote came in about a week ago.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to accept and expend what's outlined in our lovely agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
And any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, do we have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. It is a vote. Vote to accept and expend fiscal year 2019, 2020, Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency, EMPG Citizens Corp Program Grant Funds.
Great. So again, this is additional EMPG monies that have been allocated to CCPs, which are community cert. And working with our assistant emergency management director and cert member, Josh Annett, we came up with a budget and an application. So I put it in your packet because there were a lot of different things on here, but it's mostly just equipment for cert. And we're allowed to apply up to $5,000. It's competitive. And we're applying for $4,980. We couldn't find another item for $20 to give back 20 bucks. So asking your approval to accept and expend the funds.
Make a motion to vote and expand based on the description in our agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the matter? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you.
And on to tabled items. We have discussion on bylaw amendment for purposes of encouraging biodegradable packaging.
I don't know what that means, Mr. Chairman.
That was Mr. LaLiberty's item. I know it didn't have necessarily, if memory serves me correctly, it didn't, didn't have a majority vote at the time and seemed preliminary. So my question to the board would be, do you want a motion to remove this item from the agenda?
Can I ask, who are we encouraging to do this for? I'm not necessarily opposed to it or in favor of it. I'm just trying to figure out who we're encouraging.
I don't have that answer.
I'm understanding it was for restaurants.
It was for businesses, but restaurants were the primary discussion item. But it was everything more or less biodegradable packing, packaging.
So if they ask, forgive me, for a bylaw on this to?
That's correct.
I would just say that this time I, I would support removing it from the agenda. Certainly. At the time, I think it's not that it's not important. I just don't think it's, we had a lot in the pipeline that we voted on before our departures, our two recent departures. So I think we've got a lot to do.
I, I would agree. I'm just concerned about the, who's going to do the legwork. I know that Tristan felt strongly about this, but if none of us are going to pick up that, then.
I'm not in favor of continuing the discussion. I think I made that known.
You did.
We've only got 12 weeks of boot camp. We can get him, we can get him to put some work in. Don't you worry. I don't think we'll have difficulty getting him to send us a draft.
So do we have a second on Mr. Carpenter's motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And on to 7B, discussion on fossil fuel investments. Same thing brought by Mr. LaLiberty. That was in regard to a bylaw, a policy. It was really open-ended as to the town not investing in any fossil fuel investments. And again, Mr. Chambers made his position.
I, I believe we were trying to get clarification from town council on who had the authority before we did anything.
Through the chair, so the question was whether the board could direct the treasurer on how to invest money under the charter and under the law. So.
So I did have a conversation with town council. I have not received an opinion yet. We had a general discussion. He was going to check into the statutory authority of the treasurer to see if a policy of the board would conflict with that statute. And we held off at least having a discussion with our investment firm until such opinion came in. So I don't know if that's something you want us to continue to pursue. Do you want to keep it on the table or is, or I'll follow the sentiment of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Do we, do we actually know what percentage of our portfolio is in fossil fuels? Also understanding that a lot of these companies also are doing work in wind, solar and other areas. So while they might be pumping crude as is legal, they're also doing other things. So I don't know that we necessarily want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but my question is, what percentage do we?
Yeah, based upon the information I received from our investment consultant, the only investment that's part of the portfolio is tied to fossil fuel is our OPEV investment, which is about five to $6 million and roughly 2% to 3% of that is tied to fossil fuel investments. So we're not talking a lot of money.
Correct. I would make a motion that we remove this as a table item at this time.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the matter? I personally feel that it's a fiduciary responsibility when you come to investing to get the most yield. So while supporting clean air and energy, I didn't think that this was the best mechanism to do it. So I have no objections to that whatsoever. Any further discussion? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Through the chair, we will also let town council know at this point, whatever he's done, obviously we'll still pay for, but not to pursue it any further.
And we have discussion on potential creation of a student member of Board of Selectmen. That's brought forward by Mr. Carpenter. So Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, there's only one town that I'm aware of that does this in its charter. And actually I'd worked with Mr. LaLiberty on this a while back and somehow it kind of fell off. The goal would be, well, one of my goals is always going to increase voter turnout. When I was on the Board of Registars, I put together packets and did some voter registration, which was kind of interesting. I think that this is a great way to get some younger people involved. You know, my thought would be, you know, incoming juniors, we have an election. Hopefully we could get the school department to agree to have, hold the election on the same day. And incoming juniors would be eligible. They would then take their seats, serve from, you know, that year they elected for the election. If they wanted to do that, obviously we know their vote wouldn't be included in a quorum, but I think it's important to get their point of view. Especially these last two items. I think would be very interesting to see what, what they think. So it's something that we've been kicking around for a while. So I thought, well, if not now, when? So.
Are there any laws to people being out after a certain time if a meeting runs late? Do they need to return? Do we have, I don't know what the restrictions are that I assume they're 17, 18, but.
I, I don't believe they would need to get a work permit to serve on the board, but that is a valid question that we can ask.
Okay. Yeah, as long as they comply then.
And you don't believe, there wouldn't be a binding vote? They'd still be a participating member?
It's really to get the next generation involved in decision-making and, you know, having worked at the registry and, you know, we register people to. having worked at the registry and, you know, we register people to vote all the time. Kids would come in, this is before they accepted sixteen pre-registration, and they'd always say, well, I'll be, I'll be eighteen by the next election, not recognizing that there's a town election every year. And because, you know, so it's, it's just a way to bring some attention. I know they do a lot of good work at the school department with, you know, the constitution and other things. So. And I actually talked to a student who said if she wasn't graduating, she would really like to do this. So I thought that was positive. Obviously, we would need to work it out with the school committee and the school department as to what, much of the phrases, but I wanted to get the board's opinion if they, if it was worth moving forward with.
Mr. Rupert, any questions?
Yeah, so, um, uh, would adding a student member to the board require amendment to the charter? I have a few questions, actually. I don't know. So would it require an amendment to the charter to add a student member to the board? How would you choose the, would we choose the student? How would you determine what students were eligible for it? Are we all going Auburn High School? Are we looking at Bay Path? Are we looking at people at private schools? Are we going by age? We all receive a stipend, so would they require, would we be paying them as well? Would they require a work permit to pay them? Those are most of, that's all. I'm good. Sorry. I realized nobody has the answers to those questions. They were just as.
Mr. Carpenter, do you have all those?
But.
I do, but if I don't, I will ask.
Okay.
No, I don't think you need an amendment to the charter because you're not adding a voting member.
Okay.
You're simply bringing someone. The school committee currently has a student representative. I was thinking, uh, in public schools, just because logistically speaking, you look at Bay Path, that's quite a few towns. How do you segregate it?
Yep. I meant like.
My feeling is it's open to anybody who is an incoming junior, and it would be by election. Um, I understand that the, the current person on the school committee is chosen in a different way. I would think if we could get buy-in on this at the school committee and the school department level, having it on the same day, I might, might make some excitement. I know the town clerk has worked with some of the students in the We the People class and had them work, you know, the polls, so I think there's just an outcropping of that. Um, would they need a stipend? I will ask, but I don't believe so. Let's get the money, so don't worry. He doesn't know where it is, but he's got it in the safe.
And Mr. Chambers? Yep, so through, um, so I don't think it can be just an election. I think you have to have people that are qualified and good standing with the school or, you know, so there has to be something to that. And, um, all elections are popularity contests, so I just would want to make sure that they're vetted or meet certain requirements before being allowed to get on that ballot. But I am all in favor of more engagement, and as long as the right process is in place, it should be encouraged.
And, and just so, just because I'm bringing the idea of this is a board, if the board votes to support this, it's a board project. It's not Dan's project. That's why I'm, I'm saying I want input because, which is not, I'm not saying that I'm not going to make the calls and whatnot. I'm saying it doesn't, it's meaningless if I'm the only one interested in doing it, because I'm not going to be here forever. And other boards may decide, well, what are we doing this for? You know, so I, as much as you want buy-in from the students, I want buy-in from the board before even taking that first initial step to say, hey, can we even do this? You know, there may be no interest in the student body to come up here. You don't know. I mean, you don't know until you try it. I hazard a guess, based on that student, she was very excited about it. She had participated in other group, boys and girls skate, state. So she was, she was already engaged in kind of looking at government. So she, but I think we have a very robust We the People program down there. So this is where it starts. Going to town meeting, it, there's nothing more democratic than sitting in town meeting and hearing people discuss, you know, how the town's going to move forward, how it's going to spend money. So it's.
When, uh, when would the election, do they, let me back it up. Do they, are you elected freshman year's class president for the entire four years, or is it annual, just the one year?
Annual.
Yeah. So we could hold the vote theoretically at the same time.
So I think sophomores and, in, so sophomores that are going to be incoming juniors would be running, and then juniors, incoming seniors, and then that person who's, you know, starting off as a sophomore has an opportunity to run for another term if they so choose. Yeah, I think it's, it, it's going to be a long process, you know, because again, it's putting additional responsibilities on people who are, you know, necessarily in need of extra responsibility. But.
Through the chair, can I? I think we need to just take a look at the charter on this, just to be clear, because the charter does state, and I have to have it in front of me, but the charter does state that the board of selectmen shall be comprised of five members. I don't think it says five voting members. I think it says five members.
Okay.
Whether they vote or not, it's five.
Yep.
And there's another section of the charter that says no board of commissioners, other than the board of trustees of the library, shall have a, shall have members that are, all boards and committees, other than the board of trustees of the library, cannot have an uneven, cannot have an even number of members. They must have an uneven number of members. So there's two sections of the charter that I just would want to take a look at, and I'm not suggesting we go to town council. At least let us take a look. Um, and then if it's something the board really does want to pursue, then we can go to town council and get some of the answers uh, to those questions. But to Mr. Carpenter's point, if the board isn't interested in doing it, then we wouldn't go to council. But I, I, I just don't know.
This person would not be a voting member.
Right. But it's still, if it's considered a member versus, you, you have a five-member select board under the charter.
The shall concerns me more on agenda item five B than anything, but.
I just don't know. I mean, may, maybe that's true. I, I just, I want to be able to give the board the appropriate advice, and I don't have the answer, but I do know there's two sections of the charter that concern me. And you were, you were mentioning the possibility too of you have a member that's not voting. I mean, put it this way, with the planning board and the ZBA, we needed legislation to allow us to put an alternate member that was not voting, but was there, who needed to be voted. So I don't know if it, if it rises to that, because this person would never vote, but there are some nuances in the law that I'm, I'm just not familiar with. Adding another member, even if they're not voting, I just don't know. Can you?
I think we're following the member, first of all, if they were going to get any of those privileges, they'd have to be on our town ballot, which would make them ineligible due to their age. But I have absolutely every intention of giving you the time to look at it, and if something bubbles up to the surface, because I'm sure we have similar language for the school committee, that it shall be X number of members, and they're able to do it. So. However, who knows if there's some jog, some little line somewhere out there that, you know, buried in the books that allows.
Select board representative.
Exactly. The town of Cheltenham does it, and it is not in their charter. So.
So maybe, maybe through the chair, it's binding, maybe it's not a member of the board selection.
Correct.
Maybe it's a liaison to the board.
Student liaison to the board.
A, a student, uh, yeah, I, I just think if you use the word member, you may be running to some issues.
Would you be, or would you want one of us to go to the school committee with this once we, we'll probably keep it on for another meeting or so, formulate it more? Then I think we probably need their input on the matter.
Absolutely. I think we need buy-in from them and the school administration, because again, if they're going to try and put on an election the same day as we're doing an election, that's taking resources that might not be available. So, you know, got a dream first before you crash down to earth. Reality.
All right. Anything further on that matter? Moving on to the minutes of six twenty-seven, twenty-two. Does anybody have any amendments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.